Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Will you approve what you mean?
There's no additions, I think just information.
Oh, okay. Wonderful.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passed. Citizens to be heard, I don't think everybody's involved in the meeting here, so we'll just move on to payment of the bills and vouchers.
Will you approve bills?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passed. And with that, we'll go on to Dara Lee and Les, are you coming along up there? We're gonna go over the reappointments of the HRA Board of Commissioners and update of the HRA current activities.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Gross, Commissioners. And Les Baki is on our Board of Commissioners currently, and he has graciously agreed to attend in case you guys have any questions for him. The first, the order of business we're requesting that you take is to reappoint two commissioners who have each served two five-year terms and have been extraordinarily kind enough to agree to serve a third and final term. We did advertise in the three papers in Clay County in January asking anyone who might be interested in serving at our commission to submit a letter of interest. We have received no letters of interest to date. We asked that they be submitted by January 29th. And so we are asking for the reappointment of both Dale Raleigh and Ione Schultz.
I had more approval on the two.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion for the discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passed. Okay, with that, if you get some updates or is that the...
That's, we'll hope that we will keep it brief and answer any questions that you may have about the operations of the HRA, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I think it's been about a year since we've been here, so I figured we'd come on over and see if you guys have any questions, any concerns, and just kinda let you know what we've been up to.
I didn't have a lot of question, going back to these reappointment, excuse me.
Sure.
Did you need more members or is that just, that's a full staff?
That is a full slate. We have a commission that's composed of seven commissioners, and those two are being reappointed so that there are seven active commissioners.
Very good, thank you. Okay, go ahead, excuse me.
Nope, that's great. And the commissioners do represent the entire geography of Clay County. That's one of the criteria for our commission, is that they are a geographical representation of the county. And so Ione is from Yulin, and Dale is from Barnesville, Les is from Morehead, and we have folks from Holly and more from Morehead as well. So that is one of the criteria for the statutes, that they be a geographical representation. The Housing Authority is currently serving about 600 households per month. About 65 to 70 percent of those households are either elderly or disabled. And so whenever I see bumper stickers that say "In Poverty, Get a Job," I would like them to know where they're going to employ 85-year-old grandma with arthritis and congestive heart failure. Because the majority of the folks that we are serving either have significant disabilities and/or are elderly, and the other folks, we are very fortunate to say, tend to be working. We only have 24 physical rental units for families with children that are not special needs. And those are located in Dilworth, Holly, and Yulin. And the majority of those households do work as well as have children in the home. We do have 136 total rental units that are owned and operated by the HRA, and then about 470 units of rental assistance. 360 of those are the traditional housing choice vouchers, which are federally funded, commonly known as Section 8. They are used throughout the county, and we actually have cooperative agreements with Morehead Public Housing Agency, the Fargo Housing Authority, and the Cass County Housing Authorities, so that all of our vouchers can be used in any of the geographies. And we're very fortunate, since North Dakota has a much greater allocation of this resource than we do, that some of our folks who have been unable to get assistance have been able to do so that way. And vice versa, we've been able to assist some folks the other direction as well. About 25 percent of our resources have been created within the last 10 years that are dedicated to homeless populations. And so we have 40 physical units that are for people who have experienced homelessness, as well as about 120 rental assistance vouchers. And for the first time in a long time, I'm optimistic that we are actually making some headway. For the past two years, the community has been doing something called CARES, which is Coordinated Assessment, Referral and Evaluation System, CARES, trying to work as a community as a whole to end homelessness. By doing so, we are doing assessments of everyone before they get placed in housing to determine their vulnerability. So we've been really targeting the hardest to house and the hardest to serve. And after, at the two-year point, I'd say we're making some progress, in that we had three openings in our units for families with children and had a challenging time finding people who'd been homeless for more than a year, had minor children, and had a disabled household member. We didn't used to have a challenge finding those households, this time we had to go out and look. So that, that's a good thing, that we're actually making some progress. And it's been a wonderful collaboration between the local shelters, Churches United, Dorothy Day, Lakes and Praise Community Action, and the mental health agencies in town. And I think we're on the path to success. Throughout Minnesota, we're considered to be on the leading edge of this, and it's good to see the outcomes that are coming along with all the work that's been done by these groups of folks. We also are doing rehabilitation work through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. I should comment, one of those programs was refunded, were a pilot in the homeless programs for the CARES for Kids Rental Assistance Program, which is, there's three pilots that were funded throughout the state. We were refunded this past year, where we are assisting students enrolled in the Morehead Public School System who've faced homelessness in order to maintain their housing, and they're going to be tracking outcomes to see if providing stable housing improves educational outcomes in the long term. We don't have any of, Les keeps on asking me, when are we gonna have the data? We don't have the data yet. They are going to test them throughout their whole high school experience. And since some of the children are enrolled in kindergarten, it's a long-term study to see what that impact is. Sorry, back to rehab. As you know, we have done three deed grants with Clay County, where we've done rehabilitation work throughout Clay County, the last one in Holly, Minnesota, that wrapped up about a year ago, and we did commercial rehabilitation and owner-occupied rehabilitation in Holly. The city of Barnesville invited us to assist them in submitting a grant application this year, and we submitted an application on their behalf to deed for approximately $860,000 in order to also do commercial rehabilitation and owner-occupied rehabilitation in Barnesville. We'll be receiving those awards or denials in May of this year. The Housing Authority, in partnership with that, is also applying for some funds to rural development in order to partner with that. We did not come and ask for a levy, I always like to point that out, for matching dollars on this application, because we do not have the authority to levy within the city of Barnesville without permission from the city and the HRA, so have never done so in the past. And so since we have never levied there, you know, we chose not to request that, since those taxpayers have not been contributing at this point in time. Also ongoing, we have rehabilitation programs through the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for very low-income homeowners and for people who have rental properties. We started our rental rehabilitation program in 2012. We're finally completing rehab on the first two units located in Clay County. We've gone from Warroad all the way down to Elbow Lake doing rehab. Now that folks have seen what the program is, we're waiting to see if we are renewed again for funding, and we have a lot of interested applicants now. And so it's one of those things where I guess people had to go out and see other folks do it and see how it worked for them, and once they saw that it really was a good program, they're now interested in participating. So we do have a preference for Clay County owners, so we are hoping that this allocation will be primarily spent in Clay County. But that's kind of a brief wrap-up of what we've been doing.
You said at the beginning something about the people that you're housing, some of our working group, and have jobs and stuff like that.
Correct.
Once they say they have a good, you get a good, move on up, do they get kicked out of the place then, or how does that work, or?
It varies. For, we have 72 units located in Dilworth and Yulin, but are for folks who are elderly or disabled. They then, if their income exceeds a certain point, start to pay market-based rent. And so we do not kick them out, they pay market-based rent.
Okay.
That is the same thing with our public housing units. HUD is looking at that, they did a nationwide study and found folks that were very over-income occupying some of those. We have never had anybody with extreme wealth living in any of our units. But we've tried to incentivize folks to improve their incomes and without being in danger of losing their housing, because we wanna motivate people appropriately. And so oftentimes, what we have done is offered folks some homeownership options and provided homeownership education, and so a number of the families whose income has increased significantly have gone on to purchase homes in the community. And that's really what our goal is, is to help them make that step up. And for our rental assistance program, we offer a family self-sufficiency program, which means that as people's incomes go up, they pay 30 percent of their income towards rent, so their portion of what they're paying for rent also goes up. What the Housing Authority is saving in their rent payment by the fact that they're paying more of their rent is then placed in a savings account for that household, if the household is participating in that program. We can have up to 30 households at a time participate. They need to sign a contract with, and have goals. Typically, their educational goals, employment goals, perhaps purchasing transportation or homeownership. And I believe in the past year, we've had 10 to 15 graduates from that program, where people have successfully completed their goals and they're able to access those funds. In the past, some of our folks have used them to purchase homes, some of them have used them to pay off their debt and/or purchase transportation. And at times, people's incomes have gone up so high that they're off the program, they no longer need assistance. Sometimes, they're still making $10 an hour and have three kids, and they still can't afford to be completely self-sufficient. And so we also have goals through that program on increased earnings, we provide counseling, we try and attack, to hook them up with services in order to increase that income to a point where they can actually exit the program. One of the criteria for the program to graduate is you cannot receive any cash government assistance in the 12 months prior to graduation. So none of those folks are receiving any type of cash assistance prior to graduation.
Well, if you find some people that are making $10 an hour with three kids, I wanna talk to them, if they can make them be self-sufficient.
That's what I'm saying, those are the folks who aren't going out.
Are those houses that were just built on 90th Street and 2nd Avenue, or are those yours?
No, those are the Morehead Public Housing Agency, and that was the campus that is owned by them. I should also mention that the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund awarded a joint grant to Morehead Public Housing Agency and our agency to explore ways that we can work better together. How can we work more efficiently? How can we use our resources in the best way possible to reach as many people as possible? And I was just talking to Les, because we're trying to have a joint meeting, board meeting scheduled in March to discuss some of those options. Staff has already met three times, and we're really looking and exploring at different potential opportunities to work better together.
Before that, did you have something?
Yes. Dara, what did you say the numbers were of the elderly and disabled that you serve?
It's about 65 to 70 percent of the 600 households that we serve each month. So 400, 500?
So, do you, do you offer assistance for, for example, for either one of those, either the elderly or the disabled, that allows them to stay in their own home?
We have a housing choice voucher rental assistance, homeownership program. Typically, that's for the purchase of a home, and we've had disabled individuals who've purchased condos and such, and/or homes. But the primary way that we're working with that is through the rehabilitation programs, because accessibility modifications are a high priority.
But the elderly, how do you, how do you, what was the word you just used?
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitate, how do you rehabilitate the elderly when they're...
Oh, no, the rehabilitation is for their home. In order, I'm sorry, not for the person, for their home, in order to improve the accessibility would be the primary goal.
I guess what I'm asking is, you know, I've talked to some, you know, the elderly and the disabled, they don't have the opportunity to see inflation through income.
Yes.
So, you know, they're pretty much, well, you might get a little bit through Social Security or whatever, but typically, it's not very much, but yet the cost of being in a home can out...
Yeah.
Outperform the income that comes in. My point being is that at some point in time, you know, I've heard of some of these elderly people who have to leave their homes because of that. And I just wonder, is there, is there some, and then of course, then they can end up onto, whether it's state, federal, or local programs, to go into these facilities.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering, is there, are there other options out there that could be considered that would allow them assistance to stay in their homes?
And Kevin, that's an excellent point, and we certainly run into folks who are facing that challenge, you know, especially in high heating cost years. And obviously, there's the energy assistance program through the cap agencies. There are no programs that I am aware of on the federal level or the state level that provide people assistance in meeting their basic costs of owning the home. You know, obviously, there's property tax relief options for, if you're low-income or disabled, for reductions there. Through, and Rhonda would be a better person, Rhonda Porter would be a better person to address this than I, through Clay County Social Services. But there's something called an NSA Shelter Needie Payment. Minnesota Supplemental Aid is for folks who are over 65 or on disability, and that is a payment resource that can be used towards housing, and I do not know the specifics of that.
So you haven't had any elderly folks or disabled folks that have come to you that reside in their own residence that say, "I am basically being forced out because I can't afford to live here." You haven't had anybody come to you with that?
We are more likely to see folks who, due to their physically disabling issues, either due to age or other disability, who feel that they are unable to keep up with the maintenance, the snow removal, the lawn care types of issues. I'm not saying that there are not the other situations, but that tends to be what we've seen. Also, like I said, through the home rehabilitation program, we try to help make people make accessibility improvements, because at times, people only have a bathroom on the second floor, or perhaps the bedroom and bath are on the second floor, and they just can no longer get there, but they can't afford to make those significant changes to their home. So those are a priority for us to go in, and we have partnered with Clay County Social Services in some cases to make accessibility modifications so that people can stay in their homes, because that's certainly a much more reasonable investment for the long term and a better outcome for the folks who are interested in staying there.
Thank you. Les, you must have something to say.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this for the last couple days and said that I'd like to come over and support Dara in her presentation to you. Most of you know I've been on many boards and commissions and other things throughout in the past several years, and I can honestly say that Dara is the best director I have ever worked with, and you should be proud of having her as your Director of HRA.
He must have bought her breakfast.
Yeah.
She owes me later.
Yes.
Your mind.
That's, I'm serious, and it's true.
Well, it's very good to hear. Thank you for your service.
And they're very kind, and I have been blessed with the fabulous board as well. The two reappointments that you've made, they've made a 10-year commitment to public service. As you guys know, it's, we pay a premium of $35 per meeting and mileage reimbursement. So they're not in it for the profits, they are in it because of their passions and their commitment, and we couldn't be the organization that we are without that support.
I would also say that the community is quite lucky to have individuals like Les, who volunteer their time to serve on a wide variety of commissions and boards. I've served with Les and appreciate your presence, so thank you.
I didn't come here for compliments.
I know you didn't, but I think it is equally, should be shared.
Well, any further questions? Thank you very much, Dara. Thank you for your service, Les. And with that, we'll go on to Dave, that's in equipment purchases, overweight permit request, and Barnesville project.
Good morning.
List of things to go here.
Yeah, the first item I have is equipment purchase approvals. This went through our Highway Committee a couple of different times. It was a little bit of a, we had to find exactly how we were gonna fund this, and that's kinda why it went through there a couple of different times. And what we really just needed to try to figure out was, and some of this came from advice from our own shop staff, but could we keep the mowers that's on our list here any longer? Do we need to replace just two of them or all four of them? Based on the dollar amounts it would take to keep these four pieces running, I think myself and the committee and my staff would like to replace all four of them, and that's what I'd like to recommend today. Their internal service funded, they're not fully funded, they're a little short. And what we talked about and what we came to come together was possibly using up to, it's about $44,000 short on four mowers. And towards the end of the year, we'll know how our maintenance budget's doing, and the plan would be to just take about half of that money out of another piece of equipment that's a little overfunded right now, and half of the money out of maintenance funds. So that's kind of our proposal there, about $20,000 apiece. Discussed it with Lori, and she felt comfortable with that option. This Minnesota State bid equipment from Butler Machinery over in Fargo. The mowers are a little more heavy-duty, they're a little thicker gauge steel, they're a little different constructed on how the blades are attached to the equipment, and from everything we've seen and all the testimony that we've looked at, we feel these mowers should easily handle four years. What we would like to maybe look at doing too at that time is maybe we would keep two of them five years, so that way, when we come before the board, we're not coming with all four at one time. We'd go on a rotating schedule, two one year, and then maybe two the next year.
Go ahead.
I just wanna comment on that as well, I, you know, I don't wanna say I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we're replacing a fleet of four at the same time, but I would prefer that we do have more of a stagger. And part of that is because we are moving to a new piece of equipment, and unfortunately, these previous ones didn't quite work out, and found out there were some maintenance issues, and so if we're getting a whole new batch of them, and they're the same, and we have something similar, so I guess I would prefer that we're not doing that, but if it is a great financial cost to keep them throughout a year, which I'm not sure how much of a financial burden that would be. With the air compressor though, I have no issues, I think that would be a well-used piece of equipment that I know your staff has been wanting for a long time, but those are just my thoughts.
Well, we discussed that too, you know, about just replacing two of them, you know. Right now, he can get a $5,500 trade-in value on them, and if we keep those another year, we have to put around $4,000 worth of maintenance into each one, plus our trade-in value probably drops, so we thought, heck of a loss to take there, it'd be better off buying them now.
So what are you doing, what do you need to do to them to have a $4,000 maintenance a year?
It's the equipment that goes in there, I think there's some, there's some shafts, there were stump jumpers, that's the bottom part that, where the blade's spinning around, it kinda protects that blade if it goes over something real heavy. I guess that's kinda all I remember.
Well, it's not necessarily 4,000 every year, but what, this year would have required additional, because they have tires on them that need replacing, and they're not just simple $40 tires you can go buy, they're very expensive tires. And then the shafts, and we actually went out and physically...
Yeah, we looked at protective equipment.
Saw all of the, all of the components that can break down, and they're significant. I agree with Jenny with what you're saying, the, there are some instances where you have opportunities too, where buying a multiple is a good deal. I remember when we bought the seven graders all at one time, and that was a, that saved us thousands of dollars by doing it. So sometimes, you just, you run across the right economic condition to do those, but I, you know, we talked about what Dave mentioned too, and I think the goal would be to try to get them on a four-year replacement on the internal service, but to try to extend two of them out an additional year, then you would be rotating, not having all four every year. The only, the only thing that is unknown is what technology comes out next, and what offers might they be having that can, you know, sometimes you can, as in the movie The Godfather, you get an offer you can't refuse. And so with that, you know, I think that's where our discussion went. The piece of equipment that we're talking about, taking some money from the Internal Service Fund, and Lori, I think you've been aware of that, is the semi, and that has significant dollars in it, that semi isn't used a lot, and I think they can probably still get a couple more years out of that yet, for sure, potentially even longer, so I think Dave has talked to you, Lori, about this process, and it's all, it all works out good. And the only thing that he's gonna have to add, starting in 2017 to his budget, is then the Internal Service Fund increase for the replacement of the new equipment.
Yep, it's gonna go up significantly, because the old, the old mowers, we bought them cheaper, and they were put into the fund with the trade values taken out, so there wasn't quite enough being put in on annual basis, that's why we're a little bit short. The new mowers, I guess we'll make sure we get that right, but Kevin's right, it's gonna be quite a bit more than it is.
You're gonna be looking at $20,000 addition per year for Internal Service Fund.
It's also difficult to borrow $22,000 from your maintenance fund halfway, not even halfway through the year. I mean, so what happens if we do have an enormous cost? I mean, that's, I don't, I'm not in love with the fact of borrowing funds from something like that, but if it's the only way to get them.
The good news on that is the track record, you know, for example, even in the 2016 budget, when Dave budgeted, that he, there's no way we ever estimated the fuel prices to be where they are today. And so there's been significant savings there, and also with the weather conditions, there's been a lotta of materials and stuff that hasn't been needed. And so we're, I guess we're, I guess we're fortunate this year to be able to take from his budget, based on the conditions that have already been in place.
But it's only March.
True.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motions?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Okay, we go on to the overweight permits.
I brought with me, landlord has requested one of our annual overweight permits. Did everybody get a copy of this form here? This is Mr. Chad Oberg, he's got a large firing operation in the north part of Clay County, as well as other parts of the area. Years ago, this permit used to be a little more common, where we'd get more requests like this. The states changed the laws on our roads, as well as legislation, quite a bit. This permit's still, even though it was last approved in 2003, it is still applicable for Mr. Oberg's operations. And I believe on the initial request, it's usually approved by the county board, as you can read, like item number one, it's issued for businesses. Item number three shows where if you're on a less than a nine-ton highway, which he is, he's on a gravel road, if he's within four miles of a nine or 10-ton highway, it does meet that criteria. And then I believe the theory behind the permit, and maybe Kevin kinda remembers from when he first started this, was talked about quite... and maybe Kevin kind of remembers from when he first started this, was talked about quite a bit, but it's kind of for perishable items, it's for commercial items. And I, and that was about the only discussion that I thought would maybe be something we could have is, maybe Chad could explain a little bit about what he's doing out there. He maybe doesn't have an actual commercial business going on, but the size of his business is probably bigger than most commercial businesses in our county. So I guess I felt it was applicable. We've been working together, we've been hauling gravel out there. Chad actually used his own equipment and his men and hauled gravel out. It was county gravel that we paid to crush, so we got it on the road before restrictions. And then we're going to share on a fifty-fifty basis the chloride for two and a half miles. It should do multiple things. It should, one, keep the road in good shape, so we don't have to go out there and blade it every week or, or maybe even more than that. It should keep the dust down for all the neighbors. We've gotten one call from a resident that's, and he's a farmer and he's not really overly concerned on what Chad's doing, but he is concerned on safety because if he pulls out or his wife pulls out and there's a dust from trucks, so this should keep that down. As well as it, you know, it should save on, on the gravel itself. It will keep it in place and the road will be in good shape, so.
So will you and Chad discuss the cost of the gravel and the dust overlay annually when the permit is discussed? Is that, is that a thought?
The permit is kind of an annual basis and the way it is, if the board does approve it, then it's annually renewed by the county engineer. I believe we've kind of already discussed what you're saying. And I think as, on an ad, as needed basis, we're looking at doing the chloride twice a year, just based on the amount of trucks that he's going to have out there. We don't normally do that, but this might be a good place to try that. We did do the same sort of agreement with Bears out in the eastern part of the county last year on County Route one eighteen. That might be another place where we end up doing two applications as well. But a little bit of a trial and error. We shouldn't have to add gravel every year. You know, once you put the chloride down, it should keep it in, in place pretty good. So depending on the winters, if, you know, if there's a lot of snowpalling, you lose some of your gravel there, but.
So we approved the initial permit and then after that, then it's just done annually administratively through?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request for the overweight permit.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, yeah, I, so Dave, you're saying that, that he meets the criteria?
I believe, I'm trying to understand. You know, I, I.
If he doesn't meet the criteria, then I, we may have to take a different approach.
Well, item F, yeah, or, or item F there, any other use approved by the county board. I guess, I believe he, he meets in some fashion, most of the, you know, he does, he does have a fertilizer license right now, he's not doing business there. So in that respect, and maybe I can let Chad kind of leave a little bit of what he has.
Yeah, I mean, we don't plan on selling fertilizer and stuff, but it's just for farm use. We had to buy a for, commercial fertilizer license to be able to get wholesale fertilizer off the river. But we don't plan on retailing or reselling it. We just have a lot of trucks going back and forth on that gravel road for, and we do get some complaints, not only, I mean, we hear from it, probably before he hears about it, but we're trying to do what we can for the road. I mean, we maybe should have built all this stuff on a highway, but.
Seems that Mr. Oberg is very minimal to participating with the county on this.
Certainly adds my support and appreciation.
Yeah, well, I, I want to too. I just want to make sure that, that we're not creating some sort of a new precedence here. That, that's my concern, you know.
But I think there are a lot of roads that have an enormous amount of truck traffic in the county. And for me to look at this and see that this is a road that's getting a lot of truck traffic, but we're making strides to have extra gravel, have dust control issues, to recoup while it minimal a permit fee.
I, I agree, but we have weight restrictions for reasons and, you know, and I just.
But this is, this is not a grain bin that they're proposing to be built. I mean, this is a grain bin that's built.
And I think they're going to add to it.
Yeah, yeah.
They're looking at adding another bin.
We'll just pile a couple million bushels of corn on the column, it'll be back and forth. It'll, it'll just be a lot of traffic, I mean.
Well, appreciate you, Mr. Burke, what you're doing as far as working with Dave and stuff. So I'll call for the vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, Connor.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks guys, appreciate it.
The last item I have is approval of a safe house to school project that we sponsored for the city of Barnesville. That was the lighting and sidewalk project around the school down there. It started off a little on the rough side. I think they initially advertised it about three years ago, got no bids. And then they re-advertised and redesigned it a little bit and they got some really high bids. The initial contract that we approved at the board was three hundred thirty-two thousand, seven seventy-nine point nine five. That number was in excess of what funds that they had. So they did a change order, reducing the kind, the amount of work that they were going to do down to about two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three seventy-eight seventy-five. The project was complete, everything was done in, in order according to the specs. It was approved by MINDOT. And the final amount that I'd like to get approved today would be two hundred seventy-seven thousand, six forty-three forty. And I believe that's a couple thousand dollars under what their MINDOT cap is. So everything looks to be in order. Once this is approved, we'll submit all the documents to State Aid in Detroit Lakes and it should be a wrap until we get the next one, which is coming right behind.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion passed. Change there.
Dave, now that I have you here, I just have a couple comments. I have been receiving a lot of phone calls in regard to the, the highway shop joint with the landfill from residents in Roelock and Holly. And clearly you've, you've heard their concerns before. But I do know that they, if you're able to go to the Township Association meeting, they have some questions on timelines and just kind of clarifying some of the details that you presented to us with your presentation, I think a week ago, but.
Is that the one in Glendale or, yeah, Glendale?
But, yeah, just so you know that there, there are some, some questions that continue to linger on that.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
One thing I should share too is this morning, I just got off a conference call with, with the state and the city of Moorhead and they're looking at doing possibly a joint application. I don't know if it's a Tiger application or another federal application. There's another one called a Fast Track and it would be for the Eleventh Street Underpass was what they initially talked about. It's got the rail component, which is really very highly looked at right now as well. Kind of a multi-jurisdictional thing between the city, the county, the state and possibly BM too. And as we were discussing this today, they, you know, there's, there's small projects that you can apply for and then anything over a hundred million is a large project. And the city engineer talked about maybe joining the Twenty-first Street, Twentieth Avenue one along with Eleventh Street at the same time for both underpasses that now would reach the threshold of the large project size. So I just wanted to share that there, there may be some support on our behalf that they're requesting in the near future. They're looking, they know, there's a lot of work being done right now with planning and things on the Eleventh Street one. And I think there may, might be utilizing that firm to help put the application together. And I think the city and the state is going to share on that cost that, you know, something like that usually costs between twenty, thirty thousand dollars just to put that application together. So there's some work going on that and rather quickly.
As far as the people of my district are concerned, that, that couldn't be done soon enough. So anything that we could do or support to support something like that, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's huge, it's, it's a huge. If we can collaborate and, and get, get some additional assistance in that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's like a sixty percent funded, so you can get fifty to sixty million dollars of federal funds and then between the state, you know, if there's money that does come through the governor's bonding bill for a chunk of it and then BM, if they step up, there's some talk that they may fund a little bit more than their normal funding because this is such a high priority on their side too, so I'll, I'll just keep you posted on that.
Yeah, very good.
Change there.
Thank you, David. Now with that, we'll go on to a year-end interfund transfer for the jail construction fund, Lori.
Are we still transferring for last?
We still are.
We have more money, we have more money to transfer.
Well, what happened, we did approve a interfund transfer at the end of the year to cover a negative cash balance. But after that happened, another house that we purchased got posted. And so we ended up being.
From last year.
Right, having a negative cash balance again, which we can't do at the end of the year. So this is another, another hundred thousand dollars needed to put us, we'll end up having twenty-six thousand dollars to the positive if we transfer another hundred thousand.
And when we, it's, it's just a formality because all of these are going to, they're going to be repaid.
Then we'll be reimbursed by the ten million dollar bond issue that's coming through at the end.
I move approval of the request.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go first, please.
And with that, we're going to go to approval of engineering services, agreeing with Houston Engineering for the Clay County Jail project. Mr. Burke.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I have along with me our county engineer, Dave Overburg. Hopefully if you have any technical questions, you can, he'll be able to answer. As part of the, and I think we had touched on this, I know we certainly had commissioned, or talked about it in the jail construction committee meeting, but our plan is to close Eighth Avenue, which is just south of the law enforcement center. And of course, there's infrastructure that runs underneath that street, water, sewer, power lines and whatever. We need to assess what those are and how we're going to then route around those. And then also the committee asked that we look at Ninth Avenue to the north and then Ten Street that goes also between, splits the two blocks up there. So we have communicated with the city. The city utilizes Houston Engineering for their infrastructure work. They work with Mike Love and so that is what we have, who we have communicated with. I had a conference call and I think I mentioned that last week, the architects and, and Mr. Love and myself, we talked about what the scope of their project would be in designing these things. You have five tasks that have been listed in the letter and the costs associated with those costs. It'll be a, not to exceed twenty-nine thousand five hundred for that, but it'll be a, I'll say time and materials. If it's less than that, it'll be, it'll be somewhat less. So I bring this before you today for your approval, so we can move forward with that design.
What, what ultimately do we get out of this when it's all said and done?
Well, what I believe we will get is the design of what is taking, is taking place right now. And I, I give you an example of if there's an eight-inch water line and the line has to be severed and cut off, that may, may need to be routed over to some other location, another street. And that might then require a ten or a twelve-inch water line put in on that line. And that's what this will, and the same with sewer and power and different things along those lines. So it, I wish we could guarantee that all the work would be done for twenty-nine-five, that there may be lots of money involved in moving these infrastructure lines.
Well, I wish there if I can, when we went through this process and when, you know, we hired a construction manager who was pretty much going to take care of all the bidding on, on the jail and so on and so forth. But one of the areas that, that we said, and it was explicitly presented to us by the city, is that when it came, when it came to the city infrastructure, that they felt that should almost be outside of the contract of, of the construction engineer because of this type of thing that needs to be done and, and to make sure that they have some involvement with who the contractors are and that they follow the necessary city codes. They, they just want to have some input and they rightfully so. It's their, it's, it's their infrastructure. And so that's kind of another reason why we're going this route outside of the construction engineer. I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of why this is kind of unique. We won't see this in many other areas, but this one is a unique one.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, very excellent point. That, there was a lot of discussion about who would do this and the infrastructure needed to be maintained. Yeah, very, very good point.
Move to approve the request? Second.
Any further discussion? I guess this whole thing is known because we're acquiring two blocks of houses, you know. That's why we're doing all this, get the infrastructure there. And I, I don't know, I guess that's movement along pretty good, the acquiring of those houses, so.
It is moving along very well. As of, I'd say yesterday, we have two, we have two that said no right out of the chute and they're over on the western border, which works out fine for us. And we have under contract all of the others except for three of them and we're in negotiation, I'll say, with, with the signed purchase order on that. So that leaves at twenty homes that we've either closed on or have purchase agreements on. So it's been extremely.
Yeah, I think it's necessary to tell the people how all that project is going.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree and, you know, there's twenty-five lots there. And out of those twenty-five, in the near future, we're going to have closing dates on twenty-three of those twenty-five. And that's, you know, that's an incredible accomplishment and like, Tim Magnuson isn't getting enough thank yous going his way in this regard too. He's really been working with these residents. And to have something like that be moving so smoothly when it could have been so controversial with these property owners, I, I want to thank all the property owners too for, and I hope that you find other places to stay and, but this is really, this is really working out good.
I was worth mentioning because they, we have had some good cooperation from these property owners. I appreciate that. And with that, I'll call for the mo, push, a vote or whatever you got here, excuse me. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go for that, I mean, that's fair. Okay. I guess we're in committee reports, I guess Kevin is going to start with.
Ooh. Okay. Okay. Thursday, we had our Clay County joint powers and Mr. Mojo shares that, so I'll kind of let her give the report on that. I, I would like to say that our primary, first off, there's some work and Jenny will go further on it, on a fire EMS appreciation event and I'll let you speak more to that. And then the, Brian Green came in and gave us a really good report on the eight-hundred megahertz and the newly acquired drone. And then we got some more financial information on our intergovernmental retreat, which was very good. With that, then I had, I had a regional juvenile detention meeting, planning meeting yesterday with Stephen and, and some others. Mr. Whalen was there. And that's all in, leading up to the joint meeting that we have with our member counties coming up in April. And the discussion right now is primarily focused on making some changes to our bed purchasing policy. Where, right now, we have where you can purchase up to an eighth of a bed. And it, some of that has caused some problems for us because these people purchase an eighth of a bed and then they might use more than that and they, they, they come to expect that they can do that. And so we're really kind of looking at, there was a time when we needed to do that, but now with the addition of Cass County now being involved, we're, we don't have a shortage of juveniles in there, which had an impact on our budget. So, so now we're kind of getting to where if you're going to buy an eighth of a bed, that's going to equate to X amount of days per year. That's your, and if you, once you get to that, you're done unless you're going to be able to pay more. And so I think that's kind of where, where, where we're going. We're going to be discussing it with our member counties on the, I think it's the fourteenth of April, so. And Mr. Chairman, I believe, oh. We also had a highway tracking committee meeting, which we, we dealt with today on the equipment issues. We had one Safe Coalition Fatal Crash signage thing that, or policy that we were looking at. And again, more discussion on the Holly shop issue that. I think, Dave, are you planning, is that, are you planning that, is that like for three or four weeks out yet where we're? would be calling that to bids?
The solar boardings, I think, are coming tomorrow, and it'll take a few weeks to get that report back, and then we'll load the foundation design.
Okay, yeah.
So, I would expect, come to the board within about a month, if you will, settle like a date.
And I, and I agree with Commissioner Mojo that, that it would be good for Dave to give an update at the township officers' meeting. I do wanna say that, just briefly, when it comes to the township officers' meeting, I had spoken with the chairman of that group, and, you know, we can give some update on, on the jail issue at that meeting as well, but I did ask him if they would be willing to call a separate special meeting for that, maybe a month or two down the road, so that when we start putting together this total package, that we can do a presentation to the entire township officers. So, I, so I, I just wanted to bring that up as well, that, I'm not sure if it'll be Brian and I that'll do an update to the township officers, or both, or whatever, but. I'm glad, I'm proud to attend that one, so, glad to do that, but that's, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Jenny?
I also attended, as Commissioner Campbell said, the JPA, and Brian did get, give a fabulous update. There are some issues with the, the eight-hundred megahertz system. It does overlap with the schools, so it's something they deal with a lot, so it's good to have that update. As Commissioner Campbell did say, we decided in January that we were going to, as a joint powers, recognize our police people in service that we did in January with the Wear Blue Day, and March four, or May fourth, excuse me, will be EMS and fire appreciation day as well, so I'll keep you informed as to how that progresses. I also had a Lakes and Prairies meeting with the interim executive director as newly appointed chair to that. We had some, some points to go over. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Brian and Commissioner Gross on the solar energy possibilities with our new building, talking with Morehead Public Works about their solar gardens that they have in North Morehead, and, and if that would be a possibility. I still continue to believe that adding some form of, of solar into this process, whether it be on a roof that, I understand, maybe not the jail because of skylight issues, but we have flat roofs, a lot of them, but.
We also have the possibility of the LEC, too, that.
Right, so I just, I want to continue that dialogue. And then yesterday, I had a law library meeting. We talked, just reviewed minutes, financial reports, as we only meet every three months, and talked about patron access at the, the research terminals. One issue that we talked about is our jail terminal that we provide, had eleven hundred uses in December and has had zero, absolutely zero in January. So, we don't think that it's an access issue, because I, we surely would have heard from Julie, but we think it may be a tracking issue with the software, because I think they had an issue at MSU with the same thing. But that's something that I felt quite important to double check that's going on. We also discussed the possibility of providing some sort of legal help with the law library. Becker County does something similar. We have a account balance that has continued to grow from fines, and maybe Jenny can correct me if I'm wrong here on this, but has continued to grow, and we talked about using some of that dollars to provide some sort of legal help. Some of the judges now in Becker County are requiring their paperwork be signed off from this legal aide, or it's a lawyer, actually, isn't it? That, none of the documents will be accepted until it's signed off. Part of what happens is incomplete documents come forth to the court, and it's just a waste of time for everyone. So, we were talked about providing that at a cost of nine to ten thousand dollars a year, because the fines seem to be able to replenish that account. From my perspective, if it, if it's saving the courts time, if it's saving individuals' time, and, and we have the funds to cover it, it's a good thing, so. But that concludes my reports. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on this, on the solar energy? Is Morehead trying to do something similar to like what they did with their wind towers, then? Is that what that is? Were they, were you purchasing to it?
Correct. They have an area set up. They have their runs of seventy to eighty individual panels, where individuals can purchase them at a cost of four hundred and thirty or fifty dollars. And so, they're, currently have two of these runs built with the capacity to up to nine. And so, through community input, their, or interest, they're hoping that people will purchase into that and continue to grow. What those panels will do is, one, it saves you the individuals or businesses the cost of having that on your, on your, your building, which is great, but it also saves you kinda the headache of the, the maintenance piece. That all comes into a good cost. And so, it is estimated the life of those panels individually is up to twenty years, with a payback starting at twelve years. And so, no matter how many you purchase, you will have approximately eight years of income based on, on that. So, you have a panel, and however much that panel takes in from the sun is the exact amount that you're credited.
Okay. And so, so that just, all of that power then just goes to their normal grid?
It goes onto the grid, but it keeps, keeps track of it, so, and that's kinda the thought as to, well, if it goes into the grid, am I just, you know, given an estimate? It's the exact amount that's going into the grid.
I think that's a really good deal.
Yeah, they keep track of that, because your payback, they figure is around a forty-dollar a year payback, but, but if the sun isn't out and all this stuff like that, it may not be that much, you know, or if there's a lot of maintenance costs, it may not be that, but they're averaging at about forty, forty dollars a year, so that's why it's sort of a twelve-year cost.
And that would be, so we're, we're looking at the potential of, of both facilities being able to take advantage of that?
Well, the county being able to take advantage of it, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily, because it would be at their solar park, it wouldn't necessarily be tied into whatever the jail system is, but as a county-wide, I mean, if, if we had panels on the jail, then yes, it would be back, you know, tied into that system, but that also, there's headaches involved in that as well, and there certainly are, there are conversations that need to be had with Morehead to make sure that it, it's the best viable, but I, I think to have the opportunity to buy into that, even if it's at a, a smaller scale, and then if we think we wanna do more, we can add more, I think it's a good.
And I think that's something that's really, not, nothing to do with the jail. We can buy into that anytime, even as a, even as a county, you can look at making a four hundred and eighty dollar investment, you know, and after twelve years, you got your money back, and for the next eight years, you're, you're gonna make some money on it. So, if we wanna look at an investment, we can do that anytime.
Yeah, I, I see, yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm thinking about from the standpoint of every one of our facilities has, basically, it's, it's own O and M, you know, so, you know, we, if we just did that as a county as a whole, you.
If you're just an investment, just like a homeowner can make a four hundred and eighty dollar investment, you know, now, they won't see any profit till after twelve years.
Right, but I'm talking about the expense side of it, then, I, I'm just thinking from that standpoint, how, how that would be broken down, whether it's family service center or.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
Right. And I guess from my perspective, so many times, we're talking about expending dollars on the county perspect, you know, for all of our services, but not often do we have the opportunity to start accruing dollars back, and, and so that's where I think that it's an important conversation, especially to see how beneficial wind energy has been in Clay County.
Yeah, that's a perfect example of how it benefits.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tuesday, March first, Lord Planning Commission, general business, and then we unanimously passed and sent forward to the city council preliminary plot approval for Horizon Shore's tenth addition, and also zoning lots within that addition from transitional to residential low density. On Wednesday, March second, early childhood initiative for the local advisory council of children's mental health network gathering. Some of the providers there were Clay County Social Services, Lakeland Mental Health, Barry St. John's, Solutions Behavioral Health, Kindred Family Focus. The meeting was well-attended and many ideas were shared. Thursday, March third, the local advisory council for children's mental health, general business, went over the network meeting that was held for our mental health providers, and there was a lot of discussion held on foster care and how much this has increased over the past, in recent years. Agency reports from Clay County Social Services, Clay County Public Health, Lakeland Mental Health Center, Kindred Family Focus, Summit Guidance, and Solutions Behavioral Health. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Now, let's see, I had, yesterday I had the detention meeting. Kevin already covered that. Friday, I was in Osage for a Marlin Trail Extension meeting, and everybody gave updates from in the Park Rapids area and Becker County and us, and where we're at, and one good bit of information was the commission that was formed a few years, a couple of years ago, based on what Minnesota rural county caucuses worked on, where the funding for parks and trails in the state, the formula changed, so greater Minnesota gets their fair share of the money, and Morehead is scheduled for Johnson Park will get nearly one point three million dollars next year in two thousand and seventeen to finish it, so, which should make some vast improvements out there. It should be very good, so. So, that was a big, big, big payoff for us in Clay County and Morehead for that. That's good news, so. And then Wednesday and Thursday, I was in St. Paul for hearings on bonding money that the state will be giving out this year, and myself and the sheriff and the jail administrator and our architect testified at the senate hearing on Wednesday, and I, I thought it went, went pretty well. There's, there's a lot of people asking for a lot of money, so, so it'll be interesting to see if, if, if we're successful there. And, and then I attended the same hearing on the house side on Thursday, and they didn't have, it was mainly state agencies that were testifying at that hearing, so, that was it for me.
All right, I guess I had, Tuesday, we had that highway tracking, tracking meeting, and on all the Holly relocation shop there, we, you know, David has done some reassessing and putting in less windows and the different doors and stuff like that, and that's gonna probably change the price of the building somewhat a little bit, you know. Dave, I don't know, have you talked to, kind of, Kevin about it, there has to be a permit from the county or from the township, too. Isn't there a meeting on Thursday on that, or?
Uh huh, seven.
Okay. Okay.
When, when is that meeting Thursday?
Seven o'clock.
Seven?
Uh huh.
I, I'm not going to the AMC, so I might try to make that as well, so maybe if I can find out afterwards, words.
Yep, on Main Drag in Holly.
Okay, I'll get the details. Dave, can I get details of what's in there?
Okay, yeah, I was talking to Eric last night, and he mentioned that we need a permit on that. And also on the equipment purchase that we went through in the meeting earlier, but do wanna thank Dave for that tour he gave us of the, I mean, if you look at that equipment, you know, I mean, it really showed that we really need to replace that equipment, you know, instead of putting more money in some of that old stuff, you know, and I'm glad we approved that purchase thing. Wednesday, I had a meeting with MetroCog, and in the last couple of months, I've been reporting how they lost about a million dollars in funds, you know, that North Dakota took back, but we had a meeting with Grant Levi from the state and North Dakota Department of Transportation, and we found out, you know, we really didn't lose those funds, you know, it's just that if you haven't utilized those funds in a couple of years, they take them away and put them back into your, into your fund balance, but you have to reapply for them again.
So, so you can replay?
So, we can reapply for them again, but.
That's great.
They say if you haven't utilized them yet in two years, I mean, they were all assigned to a project, but those projects haven't been completed in two years. So, they're saying you haven't completed in two years, you know, we wanna new plan or whatever, you know, so, it was, it was good news, actually, and it was just a matter, I think, of some miscommunication, not miscommunication, but we not understanding how the program works, so. That was it for mine. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several of the meetings have been talked about highway tracking. The trip to, to St. Paul, I went along on that. I was just there for eye candy for the committee, I guess, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that helped.
You don't think that helped?
So, the answer is zero.
She goes, "Terrible."
Thanks for your report, then.
I, the joint powers committee, which we've already talked about, had a department head meeting, we had some training again, and had a very good discussion about the different issues going on in the county, and met with Rhonda and Kathy McKay on Friday, I think it was, reference licensing in North Dakota for some follow-up issues, and, oh, Jenny, you were there as well?
Yeah, Kathy Anderson.
Kathy Anderson was there, that's right, yeah, it wasn't McKay. And the, the situation that, that is, is kind of arising is that North Dakota's requires licensing of the social workers in order to perform work in North Dakota, and without us having a hospital here, and I'll just give a real graphic situation, there's a broken arm of a child, and they're in the hospital over there, and it's maybe a case of neglect or, or abuse. And technically, we cannot go over and follow up an investigation, and the Fargo side, they're swamped as we are over here and don't have time to take on those cases. So, we go over and investigate them, but there, there may be an issue with the, the licensing that we need to work through, and that might take legislation and everything. So, just so that you're aware, that there is some concern there on the part of our social workers and, and staff of, of doing that, because they could put their license in jeopardy and different things on the Minnesota side. So, anyway, we're working through that, but it was, it's kind of a important issue, a very important issue. Attended an advisory, administrative advisory on the diversion, and there's lots of things going on there, and, and as well as I attended a Friday afternoon meeting with, on the Minnesota side, and of course, North Dakota entities were there as well, about Minnesota interest in the funding and different things, and that was kind of interesting to hear some different perspectives on that.
You did, what was that?
It, it was just a, it was just kind of an informal meeting as to what North Dakota expects on funding, and, and we've talked about that before, and it was kind of stressed again.
Was that a meeting of Minnesota?
Yeah, Morehead was there, but the Buffalo Red wasn't there, so.
How come, how come I didn't know about, I served on the Minnesota rep for, for that? How come I wasn't, I didn't even know about this meeting?
Yeah, and I don't know if the invitation went out to you, or if I kinda stumbled on it when I was.
I never got an invitation. I don't, this is the first.
Yeah, that's why the Buffalo Red wasn't there.
I, I, this is the first I'm even hearing about this.
Yeah, well, I, I guess I.
If, if, if they want Minnesota interest or participation, they should invite the Minnesota members.
Yeah, I know. I, I need to talk about that meeting.
It's frustrating a little bit that I hear it from you, you know, that there was a meeting, and it.
Yeah, it was.
I'm a Minnesota member who makes the votes.
No, I know, I know. It was, it was, I don't know, maybe I wasn't supposed to be there either. I guess that's where I'm going, but I don't know.
But after talking about Minnesota, what North Dakota expects Minnesota financing, some sort of Minnesota rep should be there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't know why my role was there, but I just felt I needed to report that I was there at that meeting, so, we need to talk about that a little more, I think.
Yes.
The juvenile meeting, I attended that yesterday, and then Lori and I have been talking about, she just got back in two weeks, and I'm going for a week, about the revenue and expenses update for twenty fifteen. We'll get that to you very soon, so. With that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report.
Jenny, you're gonna be gone next week, or you?
I am, yep. I, I fly out to Washington DC on Tuesday.
Okay.
And I think we did approve that out of state travel, but, but I'm looking forward to it.
Was that, what's, what's going on?
It's for the community action. It's for the Community Action National Convention, but part of what I'm excited about, as well as that, is, is meeting with our, our national reps, that'll be a good experience.
Can you give it anymore? Jenny, you wanna report while you walked in so slowly this morning?
Yeah, after, after the meeting.
After the meeting, okay, very good. Your turn.
Thank you.